Like the call that December sixth, twenty twenty-three, one policy review committee session for order. Roll call please.
Roll call, Movenny Henry.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, you have a motion to approve proceedings agenda.
She'll moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Roll call, Movenny Henry.
I.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you. So I think we're gonna pick up in the documents from the November fifteenth session. And as Janette is so accurately saying, I believe we're on page four fourteen. Um, we are still in section. Five dot zero two. And I believe we are beginning with residential service applicant stat renters section. Right?
Yes.
Where I was at?
Mine's the correct page.
You are on the correct page. You know, you're in the correct document.
That's the question.
I know. I'm trying to. I can't think of when. Uh, the last edits that he may have made worse.
Um, there's some on eleven two.
Did the meeting last on the fifteenth post phone?
No, it did not.
So you still have this, this specific session?
That's correct.
Okay. Um. Second, uh, this is, like I said, this is the latest one that I found in the teams.
Then maybe it's maybe that'd be accurate one. He can, he can merge it. We're good.
Okay.
That's fine.
So I got this out of the, uh, fifteenth November file.
Yep.
Okay.
So, um. Five dot oh two, the last, the very last line, I think we said to capitalize the word final. And so if that's, if that correction is made in there, then we're probably on the right document.
Scroll up. Or whichever way down, whichever. Uh. Yeah, that one's not fine. Right above homeowners. Yes. And then we also.
Can you increase the size of it?
It's also struck, uh. Or shall be charged the maximum deposit set out. That's also.
Which section should I believe? I'm sorry.
The first paragraph in five dot zero two, I think, was what Brian was telling us.
Okay.
Yeah, we took that out.
Cause that, that one, it says our shall be charged the maximum deposit set out that was struck.
That it is.
Is that what you had?
Mm-hmm.
And then the word final was capitalized, so.
So we may not be on the right.
Yeah, it may be in the other version. Can you just check our request?
What do you say?
Uh, yeah, sure.
I guess you could merge the two if we need it, but we probably should be on the right one.
There's no track changes.
Yeah, I think that's, I think he's keeping a track. Changes in a clean one would be my guess.
That's the.
So there's the fifth one down in that list. I think it. That's. Uh, no, sorry, that.
That one.
Yeah.
There.
One above that, sorry.
That's all right. Those are all three the same document.
But the feet.
Where's, where's the final that you're looking for to see if it's capitalized?
It's either, either the clean one or that one.
But I should write that up too. I think so. That's why it should be struck up that up to.
To start with the.
Yeah, I know.
Your section and.
Yeah.
Yeah, as well. And then you can figure out where the rest of those changes are. Yeah, prior to that.
I don't have anything.
There, was there another change? You saw another change above that? He can hover over to see what?
And we already, that, uh. Or shall be charged in the middle there that we struck that. That's not struck on it.
Okay, look at the date and all over.
Nine twenty.
That was like nine twenty-eight.
Okay, that's chilly.
And that, yeah, that's her inserting.
Okay.
That word.
Something that, uh, wrong?
That's what we, we can't find where his, uh.
So when you see where it struck out up there, when did that come at best?
Rob does share these files, so great.
Uh, yes, sir. They have been saved out on teams. I'm not quite sure where this one has been moved to. I haven't had a conversation with them about this.
Yeah, Rick, Janet is gonna look for an email.
Can you use this one as market as a starting point?
Yeah.
And whatever, whatever changes take place today.
Yeah.
In sense of the starting point, so and then you guys can make sure that you're merging all, everything together. And so you'll capture all of his changes before. After the changes today.
You can just, you can just state whenever changes and make on this document, move, merge them back into this.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So I just need to know what paragraph you wanna start at and we can just go from here.
Go on down to renters. Right there.
Okay.
What you changed?
We're still going on all the changes or things here and then in order.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that paragraph down there below the bullet. Um, can, can you actually sort of give us a recap of? That. In origin.
Sure. Down there, it says in the event a renter who has not assessed the maximum deposit, who was not required to pay a deposit or whose deposit was refunded, is disconnected for non-payment of the bill for the third time within a two-year period. Deposit is set for, and the fee schedule will be added. We applicable any fees and taxes may be imposed. And so if you look, uh. See, I'm gonna try to see.
I think it's the same thing. It just added the false, the deposit schedule. I think it's the same wording.
I think we, cause I don't see any other words that we've changed.
It just says the fee and deposit schedule and then added the PC two hundred.
Yeah, so I think we just referenced where. That deposit schedule is. I don't see any other changes word for word that we changed there.
I have any questions?
So then the, the next one.
I think that one was just expanding the.
I think we have landlords. We added landlords after. After home renovators, I believe we added the word landlord anyway.
We added the word builders.
Yes.
It's just defining more of the categories.
So that's, that's the only thing that we've added there. We added in other, the other names that should have been in the builders, contractors before. Where we had contractors, home renovators, we just put the builders, contractors, home renovators and landlords. And that list out, so it. And then in the. Ready for me to call? Okay.
You guys have any?
I didn't have anything on five.
Here. There's deposit, deposit schedule. We put deposit schedule and then just. Put things for that. The same thing on the next page.
Five oh three. So the, under the, the first bullet, the non-residential applicants, they have a depositing sum of two and a half times the highest bill over twelve, past twelve months at that location. Can you just explain how that works? I mean, that just seems excessive because if somebody had a, well, is the bill only, is that portion of the bill? Only for like the electric usage or is it their total bill with all U G charges and they're, you know? Cause somebody could have a. Six or seven hundred dollar bill and two and a half times that is. Pretty big.
I believe they just look at electric and water usage. Uh, I'll probably need to confirm that, but I think they just look at what their. Usage levels are for electric and water.
That's the case.
We may want to.
Yeah.
We may want to define that then, just so that, because. Yeah, ambiguity just.
Upon usage.
Yeah, yeah.
Make.
Yeah, utility usage.
Utility usage, okay.
Do I need to add a comment here?
Yeah.
You can make comments on the go. That way we can capture all of it.
So are you asking to change bill to usage?
No.
What, we need to make this clear that the, what the, the highest bill. It's, it only, what you're only taking that from is electric and water.
Yeah, you're not taking all the U G charges and everything else to do it. Can't.
You could probably just add some of two and a half times the highest utility usage.
You should pay.
Yeah.
Add electric, water and.
No. I don't know what some of those U G charges are, are on my bill.
Good. Electric and water.
Nice. Electric and, the stormwater is the utility.
Here we go.
But she said.
Stormwater is utility.
Waste water is utility.
Just what, what comment should it be on here?
Define, uh, or.
I think if you, if you.
Electric and water.
The sum of two and a half times the bill, the highest bill comma. Factoring in electric and water usage only comma over the past twelve months at that location. Does that language work?
Work for me. That works for me. I mean, just, it's just a definition of. Highest bill.
Rick, you wanna add that into the. Sentence there instead of adding the comment, just.
Yeah, I can do that. I just provide it for anyone.
The highest bill of the second line, comma.
Highest bill, I think so.
Comma. Factoring in. Electric and water usage only comma.
Let's think about that.
Yeah.
Does that take away base charge and customer service charge, you know, customer?
Yeah.
Access charge?
I, I would, I just asked Abby that. I was, I'm assuming that because those are attached to the electric and the water usage.
So maybe we, maybe we say, how was that worded? That section you just added, how was that worded?
Factoring in electric and water.
Usage.
Utility.
Uh.
Electric.
Electric and water utility usage only.
Say that again, Jeff.
Utility usage because that incorporate. The rest of the.
But Angie just said that stormwater and.
But you, but you're saying electric and water.
Want me to say P U?
Waste water, water, actually does it.
You could say, yeah, you could just say B P U usage only.
A P charges.
Charges.
I said charges.
Well, but.
Should we consider the pilots?
But the pilots are charged. And it's still a charge. It comes, it could be, that could be. Defined a couple of different ways. I could look at it and say B P U charges. It's on the B P U bill, so therefore it's all. B P U charges. So, so that's why I wanted to make sure we specify. Be as much detail as we can.
Water charges?
I think they said related or something.
Related.
Related.
B P U related charges?
Electric and water.
How is that?
I just, that's, it can water related.
Related charge.
Water related.
I just, yeah, I mean, the, because the base component, everything like that are still in there. And there's still need to be.
Mm-hmm.
Accounted.
Mm-hmm. Add the word related. Right there.
And then take out charges.
Factoring in electric and water utility.
Usage, I'm sorry. Usage and put in charges.
Take out usage for the charge.
Yes, related charges.
Take out usage.
Right?
Yep. And the next line was just where we took out, we reassess every month. It says can be reassessed every six months based upon, and maybe we need to. Put that in there. We have usage and payment history. If you wanna put related charges and payment history, I'm not even sure.
But so like if it's, so let. Help me with that one. So if you're reassessing a deposit based on usage over a six-month period. And I understand that we're only talking about B P U. Um. So if my usage. Just becomes excessive, like if I paid my bill on time, but it comes excessive. It, it raises for whatever the reason is.
If you're the type of business that wasn't in there before and they have a higher.
Yeah, with water usage, triple.
Right, right. Or you're, or you're, or that business just, that business prior to you did not do the same type.
Yeah.
And have the same type of usage that you did. We based it on that and not on your actual.
Could you decrease it?
Now we actually.
Based on that same thing, based on that same.
What is, what is increasing?
Would seem to think you could. You have that ability. I'm not saying we ever do, but.
If I moved into Griffin Wheel and I wasn't gonna melt steel with electricity. My electric usage would be much lower.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a normal factor.
I mean, wouldn't it?
Also rebound.
It could go both ways.
It can go both ways.
Have we ever done that?
No, could we, I mean, we are asking for more reporting in the sense of give us an, uh, sent, uh. You know, more deposits. I know you guys have asked for it. We've asked for it. Um. Give us customers. And their deposit levels, uh, so we have a little bit more visibility to it.
And I believe that's why we wrote that in here because, um, uh, there could be some customers where we put on there that when they come in, there was no deposit or a limited deposit then based off the usage that they have. And based off the history of how they pay the bill, they need to have a deposit assessed because now they've gotten over the three. Uh, disconnects and, you know, could be to the fact then at that point where if a service was finalized, there'd be a larger balance. And we haven't collected a deposit at all. So in this case, once we have that and we've asked for reporting, so we can do that portion. Now we can do this if it's been assessed, it's not a fine business, that's the thing.
But it would only apply if they've failed to. Abide by their side of the contract by not being on time and, and late and or disconnected, you know? It, it's not going to, if, if a customer comes in and they're using ten thousand dollars worth of utilities a month and, uh. They always pay their bill on time and suddenly they buy a piece of equipment that all of a sudden makes them using twenty-five thousand dollars worth of. Utilities in a month. Their deposit's not gonna go up just because of that if they've had a good history.
Based on this language, absolutely could.
See, but if they've had a good, if they've had a. But I guess, I guess putting the word may. In there is how you.
Well, but I mean.
But, but mine is if, well, I guess, I guess saying a customer's had a good, uh. Pay history with this, it also would say. How long has the pay history? There, there's a difference between a large customer like that having a pay history of. A year versus, you know, fifteen, twenty years, you know, where you know that. The viability of their. Company.
So if we could follow up on the other, Jerry's not here. I do have a note. Somebody moves, somebody else moves in or at the same time it actually lowers their usage. Does that lower the audit amount, so?
Well, the risk goes down.
How do we determine that? And how do we turn that across all customer classes? So. I'll need, I need to be able to say, is there some type of exception report that they can turn up? That allow us to.
Uh, we've asked for that. We've.
I'll ask for it now.
You know, I mean, we put in a request.
Well, so is this an automated reassessment that's done every six months?
Not at this.
Not at this point. It's not a re, not an automated reassessment. The initial deposit is automated.
Yes.
What would, what would flag? A customer account for a change like that? Unless it's looking at monthly. Usage or monthly, I mean, but currently. Since it's not automated.
The ones that I've encountered where, um. It's been noticed that the deposit is too low was because they've come up for disconnect.
Okay, so, so it's, it's mostly been people not abiding by the contract.
Mm-hmm. And so the person looking at it is noticing.
I have a little more leniency that way, you know, on the rules because that's. You agree to, you agree to pay the bill.
Payment history is like the right, right bad.
Yeah.
Bad.
Well, and that's, I just wanna make sure that we're, if we're reassessing risk, we're doing it fairly both directions. You know, and.
No, I don't know.
I think I'd like to, to, I mean, do we have, or could you guys? Get data on? This reassessment that we've done over the last, I don't know, however many months this year, whatever. Over the last year, how many reassessments we've done? And what's prompted the reassessment?
We could probably reset that from I T, I would think, if a deposit on a customer was changed, has changed.
Yeah, just take out any new customers.
Yeah.
Filter out new customers and only go with existing customers so that you can see. Changes.
So before we agree with that one, before I, I would like to see what that data.
Yeah, I mean, it may be, there's very few of them that happens. So it's, is it worthwhile to? Eighty, twenty, roll.
The only other time that I can think of them being. Not even reassessed, but the deposit being applied is if they've had a, um. Assured E-bond. And it expires and they don't, then have to go ahead and apply the deposit. The account, that's not.
Well, I mean, basically, you basically.
A real surety bond?
Mm-hmm.
No, I mean, it's just replacing the surety bond with a deposit, so. Six of one have to have the other, really.
Um, hey. So this area that was struck. Um. So automatic payments, they've been draft.
Yeah, we.
Cover somewhere else?
Uh, no, um, I mean. What we were trying to do at the time when, uh, we put this in was try to get people to pay electronically.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now it's a normal occurrence, uh, so it's not a unique situation anymore. And we've, we've had a couple of situations where, so they've issued a, an A C H or whatever and it's bounced. So then we don't have anything to fall back on. We don't have a deposit or anything like that, so.
How often does that occur? I mean, on, on a business.
Yeah. It has occurred probably a handful of times probably in the last.
Yeah, and I have a problem like sort of making a wholesale change in the policy. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, and I understand it's, it's normal course of business style, but I actually would think we would. Yeah, I know, I'm sure you guys have been encouraging, you know, auto payments, right? I mean, that's just. So not sure, right?
It's not so much auto payment. It's, it's an electronic payment.
Right.
And. Whereas the bank draft, I mean, we get, we get, we don't do that for commercials, right? Or do we? Yeah, I guess we do. Yeah. So if they go, so if they go with the bank draft. I mean, that's a little more. Cause we know we're pulling the funds directly out of their account where they're issuing an A C H. You know, they're just issuing it and until it comes here to settle, that's when we're.
Yeah.
That's when we know it's bad.
Bank draft.
Well, and I, I think.
I don't know how many.
Back in.
Commercial customers are even on that.
It is some form.
It was. Sorry, what'd you say?
I think that I would like to see this back in in some form. If we have to be clear about what the payment is, you know, what it is, if it's.
So if we just.
If you make draft versus an A C H.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe.
Because reading this, I. You know, I'm.
Maybe we can do that, Janette. We can just identify it as our, um, bank draft process. Not an A C H. Not a. Somehow come up with wording to, to just.
You'll call my interest or something.
But that's what you said.
But that's what you're talking about. The bank, bank, bank drafts are what have, um. We have weighed for bank drafts and we have got to the point where, I believe the last one that was brought to my attention. Um, was a bank draft. It did come back, did not go through and the customer finalized. And we had no deposit to put against the, so. That bill was not paid. The final bill was not paid and then there was no deposit to even apply to that. And. There was a lot of one back and forth, boys group, while they were trying to. That company to pay, to pay any.
And you said a baby draft? It was that one.
That, that last one was the bank. That, that's what brought off the conversation. That happening a couple of times. I'm not sure how often, but I just remember that one specifically.
Mm-hmm. Wow. Oh, oh, no, I, I don't. I want you guys to be able to have input on the language on there because you guys understand what. Better than I do what you mean by bank draft versus an A C H and maybe we can just. Bring some clarity to that.
Okay.
The other one talks about new non-residential. A deposit determination down here. And that's just a, that's a new business. And it may be based on estimate. So at the bottom, we put the same thing. Deposit can be reassessed every six months based on uses because that basically. Here is based on estimates of types of businesses that could be similar to that one. We have no information on that. Thing on that.
Well, now I'm nervous that anytime we're referring to usage. I mean, do we have to? Like. Be specific what usage we're talking about. So, I mean, water, right? Electric.
So you wanna put this, you wanna put the same thing in there, electric and water related charges?
No.
No.
I mean, because it is based on, the reassessment is based on. Usage. I mean, we could probably add electric and water.
Are they gonna have definitions?
At the beginning.
Did we talk?
Oh, maybe you could.
U C.
Really good call.
And define usage.
At the beginning.
In the definitions and then you don't have to worry about.
In the definitions. On, in the definitions page.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that would be.
Don't have yet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here.
So I think, you know, these. A lot of them which you see are repeating themselves, you know, in the different, but they're just for different sections. So it's the same as the section before because we were talking about, you know, renters, talking about. Uh, non-residential. It's just in the event the customer was required to not to pay. So it just says.
Various customer types or groups, yeah.
So it doesn't say anything. Um, then going down to the bottom, five dot oh four, we just have a non-residential, uh, deposits maybe in the form of, how we kinda spelled that out. The, uh, we just had cash and the surety bonds, cash, cashier's check, check. Or a surety bond. So that's been put in there. And then at least an A rating. From A M Best. Um. That's the rating agencies where it lets us know we're equivalent credit rating and licensed to do business.
We don't want to be using before we can no longer use.
Yeah, they don't have.
Yeah, so we, we just define the one we are, we're gonna use now.
Used to be bankrate.com.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, bankrate.com. Which is, which is on this. Next page, since we don't have bankrate.com anymore, we put the new one in there.
Makes sense. Makes sense. Hey, Rick, on where it says our financial. On, on the email address, can you change the V to a B? You identified.
So the next one, it says that the deposits are not transferable. Um, for a customer. On one service addressed to another at the discretion of K C B P U, but uh when we did our upgrade, we were looking at, which I'm not sure we. That's something that we actually wanted to do, and I don't, I'm looking at Rick because I'm not. Sure if that's going to be possible yet, but that is something that we wanted to do is be able to transfer. The deposit, so we're not holding it again, like starting the two years over.
Is that under five oh five? The first.
The second.
The, the line deposits may be trans. On one service, yeah, I have a, yeah, I was wondering, how often is the case for that?
When a customer moves from. One location to another location, we normally have to refund the deposit that's on.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Assess it on the other account, it'd be a lot easier.
And I've heard a lot. Well, not a lot, I'll, I'll, I should quantify, I've, I've heard prior. Uh, on multiple occasions, but I don't think it's more than. A handful over the twelve years, uh, from people that complain because. My deposit's already tied up there and I have to put another deposit in before I'll get, I'll see the refund of the primary. Deposit, it's just, I mean, it's just a timing thing, is what it is, so it would be nice.
Account, before they sign the account, they're final, they're finaling this account, we're going to apply it, so. The balance on that account is not the same as it would have been on their final bill had we not applied it, and that happens immediately. Once they're going to the, the next account, and then we reassess it, but remember, it's not due immediately. It has thirty days as well before that one's due.
But, but let's say, let's say that I. Sold my house and I bought the house across the street and uh. I take, you know, um, my house is sold, I'm taking possession on the thirtieth. When do I have to finalize, I mean, do I have to come down on the thirtieth and try to finalize this bill to be able to move the?
Well, you know, you can come down here first.
And, and then. To move it to the other one.
So we just need a day's notice uh before you final, and we can take the order up to thirty days ahead of time, so if you do.
So, so they could move a partial bill over to the new account, basically with them, whatever the, whatever the usage was from the time that they made a payment. To, to that, and just gives you guys a chance to look at. The new address to see if there's any anomalies that would require. A change to the deposit or something like that, okay, I, I can, I can understand, I just, yeah, I just think that that would. Be. A added benefit, just knowing how many, I don't know how many accounts that would really cover, but. It's just one less. Thing that people hate about the B P U. Unfortunately.
Do you have any sense, or you may know?
I'm looking right now. I'm actually emailing a type of canita, and I will have an answer by the end of the week.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that's, that's a positive, that would be. And when I say people hate B P U, it's just. Those that are uneducated hate the B P U, about the B P U, hate the B P U. They don't understand the value.
Yeah, I had asked Gabby, what was some of the? The, the issues that we encountered when we were testing and finding out, and I was letting her kind of explain what the issues were, why it didn't sometimes. You know, one doesn't equal one over here.
So currently, the way we bill a deposit is based off of the location. So um like say Jeff, for example, he said he could move from his house, we'll say he moved to an apartment, so at his house right now, he'll be billed for electric and water. At the apartment, he can only be billed for electric, so then we wouldn't be able to transfer the water portion over because there's no water there. So then we're looking into just applying the deposit to the account, because as long as we keep the same account number, then we can move the deposit that way. So that's the last thing we got.
So just a flat, straight up deposit to deposit movement.
That usage surely is going to be different.
Correct, but our residential deposits are set out based on your credit score currently. So right now, it's not based on the usage for the residential.
Yeah, that is one thing about the way they are set now is that. You wouldn't. It wouldn't be adjusted for. Uh, usage or diminishing usage or inflated usage, it's based on how well. The payment history that down there, okay.
So those were just some of the things we had to clear up, we, we would like to be able to do that, which is saying. If the system is going to really allow us to just transfer your deposit, so we don't assess another deposit.
So today, we can't do that yet, but uh do we try to do it manually today? Or, we just, we'll cross it when we can actually do it.
Right, we're not doing it manually, we're still.
In the same way. So I just wanted to bring our attention to that, since it's something we currently can't, but do want to do and, and are still pursuing that option. I think, as you said, it makes it a little bit easier for customers if it's just carried over, understanding that. The balance that they have as well on the account would have, would now be a, the final balance would be higher because we did not apply the deposit to that, but sometimes it's okay. Customers, they just don't like to see the new po- deposit applying.
And can you walk me through the next paragraph? Uh, and well, actually, I guess my question to that is, when it says the credit may be delayed. Is that any more than just waiting until they've, their final bill is cleared? I mean, cause it's talking about a person who has not abided by the contract.
Okay, if a person has not bought about a contract. Encurring late payment charges doesn't mean that they're unpaid. I mean, you can pay your late payment charges and we're still gonna, that's the question I have here.
Yeah, well, mine was, mine was that it says that, you know, this is the credit, getting back your deposit at the end.
I understand.
Well.
Does it matter?
It. It would matter on whether or not you, you settled your final bill. To me, and that's what my question is on the credit may be delayed, would we, would there be times that a credit would go back to them? Prior to them clearing their final bill?
So this isn't what they final, this is just if they uh continue to have service with us, we just look at the last two years, and if they haven't. So say I just moved in and it's been two years, they'll look at my account to see if I'm eligible for my uh deposit to be credited back. No, that's uh, no, that goes back automatically, so the system generates that if they get the deposit back.
It doesn't?
Yeah, it, it does.
It's not manually.
It's not manually.
So if the customer is eligible for their deposit to be credited back after the two-year period, it will automatically go back to the account. If it's not, then the, the system looks at it every twelve months after that, so it's not another two years, it reviews it every twelve months.
So this is just an automated check of an existing and ongoing.
Yes.
And the same thing, a residential and non-residential.
But, but the next sentence. Tells me that it's possible that the deposit won't be credited, maybe ever.
And that's correct, that's correct.
So if, if you have two late, two. Instances of late payment charges, if they've occurred in a prior twelve-month period. You're not getting your deposit, despite the fact you've paid those late payment charges, you're not getting your deposit back?
That is currently how it's set up, yes.
That is not okay, that's not okay. If you have paid your debt to B P U.
Well, yeah, I would. I mean, once a person finalizes their bill, they would get their deposit back, right?
Yeah, once they finalize it, they'll get.
Yeah, you don't, it's just saying that these are talking about, this is talking about prior to finalizing an account.
Then that needs.
Are the opportunities of, of getting a credit for your deposit. And I, I can understand that, basically it's saying you're still a risk. Cause you're not making just steady payments on time. But it's just.
Too late payment charges a year, I'm not making my payments on time, that's what we're, that's what we're. That's what we think a person is of this. I mean, if I pay, if I pay my bill late one day to B P U, two times in a twelve-month period, I'm a risk to B P U.
You'd, they would have to make, they would have to make the assessment, but.
But it's on the third one, so if you have two. It will be refunded, it's on the third one, if you have a third one, that means you've been late three times, then at that point, that's when it's not refunded, so that's what's saying, and the.
Three million dollars in deposits right now that's sitting.
After a certain amount of time passed, if they make regular payments, then it is refunded.
Yeah, but so after the first two years, and if it's not refunded because there's more than, more than two late payment charges. Then the next thing it goes to is the next twelve months, so then if you improve that within the next twelve months and you have two or less, then it will be refunded. And then the first paragraph talks about the final account, that's what Ron first.
Maybe, you know what I mean, it's like, I feel like. We're bleeding up to the final part, and I'm like reading this out of order, so maybe if we actually change the order, and I'm gonna work on that, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, and maybe we should, maybe it should note in there for ongoing accounts. Or something that. Yeah, that, that defines it as, these are for current and. Ongoing customers, not finalized bill.
Do I need to make any notations on here?
You can make a notation, then I'm gonna review the whole section.
Review the order, review the order of paragraphs.
Maybe section five, one oh five.
Give you the order and the content of what's on these, correct?
Yeah, but content more just for clarification, it sounds like. I'm not gonna change anything about the transferring, I promise. That I promise.
And you want American pay this with.
Clarification.
Order and certification. The next one, there's a couple of changes on the fraud. Fraudulent information.
Needs a period somewhere.
Read it myself.
I think there needs to be a period after service and then.
I think that's what it, and it does need a capital D, I think we had it. And price should say a deposit, if we're gonna put a period there, and we need to.
So. In the second line, after service, put a period there. And then um, put the next, the third line in front of deposit, put. Uh, capital A. Is that right, a deposit?
Connection.
It's imposed or required.
I think maybe.
Required. He said imposed or required, we say imposed. You can decide.
So further down here, it says, uh, refusal to provide or discontinuance of service. So at first we're saying if this was, you did this in order to obtain service, that's one thing. But then we have discontinuance of exist- of existence, existing service, right? So I understand that what we mean is. At any time you provide fraudulent or material misrepresentations to B P U related to your service. Maybe subject to, maybe refuse, refuse to provide your service, or we can discontinue your existing service, correct? Okay, can I take a stab at rewording this entire paragraph? I mean, I have part of it here, and I, I think it, but I just want to make sure I understood. I, I got you.
I was trying to reword it in my head, I don't know.
No, I'm saying that I started typing.
Like maybe discontinuance of active service, I don't know.
Well, yeah, and I mean, and I, I get where we're at, and definitely, it's just basically any time. You know, that we determine that there's been fraudulent information or material provided or material misrepresentation made. We can refuse your service, or we can discontinue your existing service, right? And all these others, all these other things will be imposed, potentially. I understand the, the intent.
Uh, so we had seven oh one. Second paragraph. Now would the circumstances warrant asking the, the names of each adult occupant at a location, if their names are not on, if they're not account holders? I guess you can request it, but not requiring.
I would only think you'd do that.
I mean, if I have my three adult children living in my house. Uh, but it, the bill is mine and my wife's, it's.
Your grandparent.
Yeah, it's not applicable that B P U knows the name of.
Circumstances.
Other people living in.
Think of what circumstance.
I know the, I know the circumstance, I'm pretty sure the circumstances. Were because we've had people who use the name of other people on accounts, and they're still living at the house, and but unfortunately, I don't know that. Legally, I'm not sure, we can ask, we can ask, I guess we can request the names, we just can't require them.
Right, I mean, ultimately, whoever sign, whoever is the account holder or. Is responsible.
Yeah, the charges.
I would say the circumstance I could think of which would just lead back to fraud is that the lease they turned in was altered. Um, you know, then we can contact the landlord and just verify are these tenants that are living at the property.
Yeah, but it's not, I mean, it's only for us to know who the account holder is, and, and go to the landlord and say, is this account holder a tenant at this? But not anybody else that lives in that apartment. I mean, I understand the reason behind it, it was a possibility for collection or for avoidance of future.
Okay, and I'm gonna go back to this one, the only time I can, I can think of another situation is when we have. Two names on a lease and that customer uh wants to sign for service, and one of them come back that they owe an outstanding bill. And then that name is taken off, even though that person is still residing at that location. I know we've got.
But that's a point that, that's just unfortunate, I mean, someone's avoiding, that's where you have a bill collectors and stuff because. They're avoiding their costs and if their name.
When that happens, though, they've sent us the lease with both names, and then once we come back and told them this balance is owed, then they try to send in a lease without that name.
Well, they would have to go back, I would just, but at that point, can we just, at that point, can we just verify the lease with the landlord?
Right, and I said, and that's why I said the circumstances, I think we have more are to see if there's fraud.
Yeah, I just don't know, I just don't know that you can, I, like I said, maybe you leave it in and saying that you may request the names, but. You, I don't think that you can legally require the names. Not of somebody who's not on the bill.
And so.
I think that's a little.
Goes back to, you take that name off and then the person signs as an authorized person who is not responsible for the bill, then we can't transfer that balance that we know that that person is there. They're living there, they're off, they put themselves out as authorized. Then we can't transfer that balance that we know that that person is there, they're living there, they're, they put themselves out as authorized, but we have an outstanding balance.
I, I, yeah, I understand the, the risk and, and the cost. I'm just telling you, I don't think legally that you can require, you know, that you can, you can go after people that aren't on your bill. I mean, they may have an outstanding debt and you have an address now that you can send a bill collector to, but, but I don't think that we can pursue outside of, they, they don't have a current contract with us because they've nullified their contract when they, you know, left. Whether they paid the finalized bill, they finalized the bill.
If they were never on the lease, yes, but.
But if they've been on it, but if they've been.
They sent the leasing.
No, but that's, but if that's the case, if there's both names on the lease, then you just send the bill and you say, we will not accept the lease without the other, without a verification from the landlord.
But prior to letting them sign up for service, what we have to do is tell the person you have an outstanding debt that needs to be paid before you, before we can sign you for service here. So then what happens is then receive another lease with the person's name not on it. Not that they're gonna be living there, but they'll have it removed.
But do we verify that lease with the landlord that that is the person that's only one on the lease? Because if that's the case, then that person has left. And if it's not the case, then it's, then it's the landlord's issue that you got a person who's altered a lease. I mean, it's just not, I just don't think that it's, I just don't know legally, I guess is the question or something like that. If you can.
With which scenario?
Well, well, just any, my question is, does this second paragraph stay? That's what I'm getting at.
And I just feel like if, if we, it's warranted, if that person was removed from there and we contact the landlord to find out if that person is living there, then we should be able to proceed with this person's living there. We're still going to, to collect this amount.
But who you're gonna collect it from? You can't collect it from the person if.
If the landlord says that they're living there.
If there are, you can collect it from the person who owes it, not the person whose name is on the utility bill that does not owe the bill.
And that's why we try to do it prior to them moving.
I know, but what my, that's why I'm saying though, is that, that to me, this paragraph doesn't fit.
I think.
So there's.
It's our due diligence and finding out if that person is going to be living here before we give service, right?
Well, so there's several scenarios. Um, you know, one is if, if someone is on, you know, the person on the bill is responsible. But then there's the scenario of there was a lease and then it's altered. You know, that's a different scenario where, where it was alter, you know, altered and not at a new lease.
Well, and that's a thing.
If there is a new lease, don't we feel it's our due diligence to see if they even are given a new lease that person is? Because, because with that information, then it to me goes back to the fact that we can't do it afterwards. Because if we accept that lease, how that lease is and allow them to move in, what we used to be able to do was if we saw then that they, there was an outstanding bill for that person, we could transfer it. But now we're saying we can't transfer it, then we have to try and catch that prior. So that's why we have to make them, we make them aware of it when we know that, that they owe that bill. And then now we just remove that name, but it doesn't remove who's living in that residence.
I know, but you can't, you can't prohibit service to somebody because somebody else living in the house owes a bill. If they're not, if they're not jointly partners. If, if, if I had, if you, if I moved into your house and I have a bill, an outstanding bill, but my name is, you know, is not on the lease, you can't, the BPU can't charge you for my outstanding bill. You can only collect, the BPU can only collect that bill from the person who created the debt.
So my thing is, why are we not pursuing that prior to that? If any outstanding debts are found on anyone that has moved into a location where they collectively.
Only if their name is on an account. Only if their name is on an account. It is none of our business who's living in the house, whose name is not on the account. That, this is a utility. This is, this is the.
So what you're saying, once we tell them that they owe a debt, it's okay if that person then has the landlord remove their name, but they're still going to be occupying.
So I think we just need to come up with a strategy and how we collect it from the people that owe us money.
At that point there, you contact the landlord.
If the circumstance is warranted.
Yeah.
I think you're on a legal.
And we also have situations where the landlords can't, or excuse me, the tenants can't because they owe debts. And then all of a sudden it appears the landlord's name.
Yeah.
And they could do that too.
But, but that's the person, you know, I mean, unfortunately, there are people who are gonna play the system. I wish that we could say that there wasn't.
I mean, we're talking about. One on one tense, I mean.
That's what, I don't.
Literally every BPU password.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, that's why I'm saying is I just don't think that legally this is, it's legally or personally morally that we'd be doing that because we're, we're potentially limiting services to somebody who doesn't owe the bill.
You know, I think I would like us to get a legal ruling on this.
Right. No, I don't, I mean, I agree, you can't, I've always said you can't go after someone who wasn't, who didn't incur the debt. So.
But is, is there a legal request?
Well, you can request. Yeah.
Yeah.
Request.
Yes, that's the thing.
Right.
So that's the thing, that's the one thing about.
But then you're not gonna get a lot, I mean, it's not gonna do a lot of good if they're.
But the question is, is what do you do with that information?
Right.
I mean.
I understood we could do this prior to setting up the service. So is that, that's the last idea? I mean, so if they come in together and you can say, we're not setting it up, one of you, you know, there's this outstanding amount, shall we put it on this, you know, shall it transfer and both parties agree, then that's what happens. But if they, if one person comes in and puts their name, then, you know, and we're gonna have to sign them up.
And I, I.
I understand that.
I don't think this is.
But we're saying we get one lease and then that lease is changed to another lease. We are, but we've already run this lease, so they were going to be there together. So we said this outstanding balance has to be paid for this person prior to them being able to enter into this agreement. And then what we're doing now is it comes back and it's changed. And so the, the.
Right. And then you verify whether or not that was.
And then we verify if that person is living there.
Or verify whether or not.
And this is prior to service. I mean, this is prior to service being given.
I mean, you have to verify whether or not that is a lawful lease.
What is like, um, you've already had a discussion with the. We'll purple back. We will, we'll purple back.
Have a motion.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mulvaney, Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Uh, work, or policy committee is adjourned. We are.
Oh, yeah. We talked about, we talked about leave with the next paragraph.